All right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you and call the order, the May 26th Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting pursuant to the Governor's State Home Stay Safe Order. The city will take actions on necessary and routine business. City is prohibited from conducting meetings unless the meeting is not conducted in person, and instead provides options for the public to attend through telephone, internet, or other means of remote access, and provides the opportunity of persons attending the meeting not in person to hear each other at the same time. Therefore, we're conducting this meeting via Zoom. So, welcome, and I'm going to start the Pledge of Allegiance. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have a published agenda, and council members feel free to unmute yourselves so that you can vote and discuss this. So, we have a published agenda. Are there any amendments to this evening's agenda? I'm gonna let a couple more people in here. Mr. Clausen, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as published.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, the main motion by Councilmember Clausen. Any getting feedback here? There we went away. So, any further discussion of the published agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda as published? Say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been approved. We are to our citizen comment period, we are taking comment this evening, and I only see one member of the public in attendance, Mr. Murphy, and he told me earlier, he is here to observe, and he did not have a comment for us. So, I am going to close the citizen comment period, since I see no other members of the public online. We have a consent agenda that has been published. Sir, a motion. Councilmember Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Luca Reli. Further discussion of the consent agenda items that have been published. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda items? Say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We have no presentations, we have no public hearings, so we are on to our first business item, which is the adoption of a resolution expressing our support for application to the governor for a variance from Governor Inslee's Healthy Start Four-Phase Plan to Ensure the Expedient and Safe Restart of the Economy and Social Activity in Kitsap County. And just to be clear, I guess this is me, so I've got to go find that staff report to read it. Oops, and I am...
Page nine.
Yeah, other than I didn't open the PDF yet, so I was working off of a paper copy. So, bear with me for just a moment. There we go. Sorry about that. So, the city of Port Orchard, led by its residents and business, had a strong record of compliance with the Governor, Governor Inslee's Stay Home, Stay Healthy Order, and as a result, the city has had success minimizing the impact of COVID-19 on the city and its residents. In coordination with Kitsap Public Health District, city and county have successfully preserved essential hospital and public health services, and as a result of these efforts, Kitsap County has seen only eight cases in the month of May. This was published last week, and I think we had one subtracted and one added. I think that percentage might be point zero 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 two now, and with 162 cases as of this afternoon. In Kitsap County for the duration of the pandemic, the economic impact of the Governor's order to business in the city has been substantial, as businesses have prioritized public health concerns over their own fiscal help. The Governor adopted a Healthy Start Program, which allows reopening of the state over four phases based on public health guidance, and the Healthy Start Program allows counties to seek variance from the Washington State Secretary of Health to allow the early advancement to the next phase where certain benchmarks are met. Earlier advancement to the next phase would enable the businesses to reopen sooner utilizing safe social distancing. The Governor initially restricted the variance to counties of less than 75,000 persons, regardless of the successful health measures taken by the county and the cities therein. On May 18th, 2020, the Kitsap County Board of Commissioners petitioned the Governor to expand the variance eligibility and recognition of that larger counties such as Kitsap have successfully taken steps to protect public health and minimize potential outbreaks. On May 19th, 2020, the Governor announced modifications to the eligibility criteria, rendering Kitsap County eligible to apply for such a variance. Submission of an application for a variance is under review by the Kitsap County Public Health District based on available public health data. Public Health Board is set to meet on Wednesday, May 27th, 2020, to discuss the submission of an application for variance. And I have been, as the Public Health Chairboard, I've been on the phone today with Keith Grönner, the director, and we have seen no other problems related to the Washington Vets for Veteran Homes situation. I'm confident that Dr. Turner is gonna, she's part of this process to sign that application tomorrow also. Kitsap County Commissioners likely will take action on this tomorrow afternoon, and it's possible that this application could be to the state by tomorrow evening or Thursday morning at the latest. So, with that, I'm available to answer our recommendations, staff recommendations of adopt resolution expressing support for application to the Governor for variance from the Governor's Inslee's Healthy Start Four-Phase Plan to Ensure the Expedient and Safe Restart of our economy and social activity in Kitsap County. Councilmember Kuchardi.
Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution expressing support for application to the Governor for variance from Governor Inslee's Healthy Start Four-Phase Plan to Ensure the Expedient and Safe Restart of Economic and Social Activity in Kitsap County.
I heard a second by Councilmember Clausen, and a motion by Councilmember Kuchardi.
Comments or questions regarding this matter? Councilmember Ashby.
This is for Phase Two. Will we have to go through a similar process for Phase Three and Four?
That is a really good question, and I wish I had the answer to it, but I probably, wouldn't surprise me at all, I guess is probably a better answer, and I wouldn't be surprised that come Monday, when everybody was supposed to go to Phase Two, that possibly communities that are still in the throes of this don't advance. I saw, looking at this application, and I believe I forwarded it all out to you guys over the weekend, King County is still getting 75 cases a day, Pierce County slightly more than 20 a day. That's really significant, it's really gonna be important for us in our community to, just a second here, I'm gonna let somebody else into the meeting, to continue to observe social distancing. It's gonna be very important, in particular when our hair salons and restaurants are open, and our neighbors' businesses like that aren't, that we don't want to have a relapse of this. So, it's gonna be imperative that we continue to practice social distancing, and when you can't, probably to wear a face covering. But I'm excited that our data supports this, this is the right decision. I appreciate your support in this matter. Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
I'd like to go ahead and commend our citizens of the city and the county. Numbers don't lie, and people have been doing a lot, taking a lot of effort to social distance. I would, I'm sure everybody would continue to hope that people would wear masks, but numbers don't lie, and our citizens have done a great job, so moving forward ahead of the state is a good thing.
Councilmember Kuchardi.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that while we, the Port Orchard City Council, we don't really play a formal role in this process, I mean, it's laid out very clear, the Governor, of how a county like Kitsap has the opportunity to move into Phase Two, but I had asked the Mayor to put together a resolution just showing that Health Board our support if this resolution were to pass tonight. I echo what Jade just said, and by no means does this trivialize the potential for impacts from the COVID virus, but at the same time, I think that as a community, we've learned a lot, and I really feel at this point, our small businesses are really being impacted, and perhaps even impacted unfairly. If we can have hundreds or thousands of people through some of our box stores, I'm confident that our local business owners will take the necessary safety precautions as prescribed as we enter this, and they will do their part to also keep people safe. And so, I'm very hopeful that we get some good news here over the coming days, and I think it is a much, much needed shot in the arm for these other businesses to be able to get open, and to restore the jobs that they've lost and their business operations.
Well said. Other comments? Yes, Charlie, go ahead.
Just two quick things, one to follow up on the question about eligibility for future phases, it does look like per the Governor's direction that this is for Phase Two. So, Inslee's phased approach has been called various names, but it looks like the proper name is Safe Start. So, switching the name throughout the resolution to Safe Start as opposed to Healthy Start would be a proposed friendly amendment.
Okay, other comments? Councilmember Deener.
I'll echo what's been said already, but I wanted to thank the citizens of Port Orchard and Kitsap County for taking this seriously. It's amazing how responsive we've been, and thank you for your hard work in putting this together as well.
Okay, any last comments before we vote? Or you vote, I don't get to vote, at least I don't think so, there's an odd number tonight. With that, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution expressing support for an application to the Governor for a variance to the Safe Start, is that what you said? Four-Phase Plan to Ensure the Expedient and Safe Restart of Economy and Social Activity in Kitsap County, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. We're on to seven B, Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Port Orchard Municipal Code 9.30 Nuisances to Address Nuisance from Other Stinging Insects. Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. Before you tonight is an ordinance to amend Chapter 9.30 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code dealing with nuisances. Earlier this spring, we had a complaint from a resident whose neighbor was keeping bees, and those bees were interfering with the enjoyment of that person's property. And after investigating this, we learned that we had no codes either in the Land Use Chapter or in the Nuisance Chapter to help us address this as a code enforcement measure. Fortunately, code enforcement did achieve compliance through working with the neighbor who was keeping these bees. However, we did want to move forward with a two-pronged approach to implementing ordinances for beekeeping, both in the Land Use Code and for the Nuisance Code. Tonight's ordinance adds about seven lines of text to the Nuisance Code and declares not beekeeping generally as being a nuisance only when the keeping of bees is going to swarm or interfere with the normal use of property or the enjoyment of people, animals, or adjacent property, or if people have abandoned hives, diseased bees, or keep other things, yellow jackets, hornets, et cetera. So, it's a pretty simple fix, but it does give us one of the tools in our toolbox that we need to deal with this should it become an issue again. And then the other land use portion of this code will go forward through the Planning Commission over the coming months, and will come to you later this summer. If there's any questions, please feel free to ask, and staff recommendation is to approve the ordinance as written. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 9.30, adding provisions for nuisance bees and stinging insects.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clausen, the main motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Any questions or comments for Mr. Bond? Councilmember Deener.
Well, what was the compliance that was worked out?
The individual keeping the bees had, I think, eight hives on a fairly small lot, and he has reduced the number of hives on the lot by taking some of those hives elsewhere.
And then, you said this is a two-pronged approach, we're gonna look at land use code, which might specify how many hives can be kept, is that correct?
That is correct. Under the Land Use Code, under the agricultural category of uses, we will call out beekeeping, and we will set some minimum standards for how many you're allowed to keep on a residential lot in the city.
Or maybe maximum standards.
Yes, thank you.
And is it your early opinion that this gentleman would be in compliance with that proposed land use code? I know it's a bit of speculative question, I suppose.
I would have to double-check with our code enforcement officer to see what exactly has been done. I know that the problem has mostly been taken care of, and I believe that Mr. Price is coordinating with the beekeeping organization in the county on these regulations, and they're pretty in line with what other cities in the area have been doing on this.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Bond?
Yes, I have one. I would assume, Nick, that the Planning Commission would be reviewing those proposed changes and may have opinions on their own that could influence the final outcome.
Yes, absolutely, and there will be a public hearing on the land use portion of the fix that we're bringing forward.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Bond? Councilmember Ashby.
Yes, I don't have a question, I just wanted to compliment Nick and his group, or his department, for taking care of this issue so expeditiously, because we just became aware, but I'm gonna say about a month ago. So, I really appreciate the effort you put into it, Nick, to help our citizen.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, with that, you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code 9.30 Nuisances to Address Nuisance Bees and Other Stinging Insects. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we've adopted the ordinance. So, we are to seven C, Approval of Memorandums of Understanding with the Police Guild Representing Patrol and Sergeants. Chief Brown, this is you.
Yes, sir. So, this returns back to what we previously discussed, so I'll go through my summary, and if you have any other additional questions, we can address that. So, the Chief of Police has reviewed the organizational structure and current patrol deployment, and determined that an alternative schedule is more appropriate for the department's needs. The current schedule consists of a mix of five eight-hour shifts or four 10-hour shifts with officers assigned to specific squads. The schedule of 10-hour and 45-minute shifts provides multiple benefits to the city. It allows for additional coverage during peak service hours, permits mandated training to be conducted without overtime costs, and with a new sergeant's position increases field supervision to over 80%. The schedule matches others in our area and provides the department the ability to better collaborate and train with our regional partners. This in turn increases our ability to recruit and retain professional staff. The schedule also benefits staff wellness by providing a rotation of days off to include two weekends off per month for each officer. An increase in time at home and the ability to have additional time to decompress has been shown to decrease the incidence of officers out with illnesses and to benefit officers' mental health. The MOUs change specific language in the current contracts relative to the officer's schedule and adapt language regarding time off benefits. The language does not increase or decrease any benefits that have already been bargained and are included in the current contracts. The MOUs are for a trial period only, may be extended and/or incorporated into future agreements by mutual agreements. So, staff's recommendation with the support of Mayor Patansu and Finance Director is to approve the recommended MOUs to allow the police department to utilize a more effective patrol deployment schedule. And I really want to credit the Finance Department for working very, very hard on this to make sure that we could do this right when we brought it to you.
Councilmember Deener.
Mr. Mayor, I move authorizing the mayor to sign memorandum of understanding with the Police Guild Representing Sergeants and with the Police Guild Representing Patrol Officers regarding scheduling.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kuchardi, the main motion by Councilmember Deener. Chief, I believe that Councilmember Rosa Pepe had some questions at our last meeting, or our closed session actually, regarding the sick leave and whether or not the neighboring jurisdictions that utilize this tool saw any improvement in leave.
Yeah, so I did reach out to several different departments that have switched to this schedule as opposed to starting with this schedule. Anecdotally, there was not a whole lot of evidence that showed an increase, but when I was asking for specific data, that was kind of a heavy lift, but in speaking to a number of different commanders and CEOs, there was not a significant increase in leave taken. Does that answer your question, sir?
It was Councilmember Rosa Pepe's question, so.
I think we'll look at the weird... Chief, I think we can look at the numbers on our own as we get closer to the end of the MOU, and just see how it goes. So, thank you for asking those questions of our neighboring district.
Of course. Councilmember Clausen, you have a question?
Yeah, I did. In the staff report, it says that the MOUs are for a trial period only and may be extended or incorporated. What about if it was decided that it was not effective, can we cancel?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I think, I believe, end of 2021 is our current labor agreement, so I would imagine as we negotiate the next round of agreements, it'll likely get this or some variation would get incorporated into those agreements.
Assuming that it was effective and did what it was supposed to do, then yes, but if it was a big failure, then I'd like to be able to say, no, we're not interested.
Yes, fair point. Councilmember Ashby.
I believe that language is in the actual MOU. Clerk Reinerson had sent that out to us last week, and I'm remembering that language being in there.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Other questions, comments, statements regarding this matter? I think it's important that we have work rules that are similar and competitive in the work environment, and so something that was asked for by our law enforcement personnel, and our finance department looked at this long and hard and make sure that our new accounting software had the ability to be compatible so that it worked seamlessly, and appreciate everybody's efforts in this matter. So, with that, you'll be voting on the approval of Memorandums of Understanding with the Police Guild Representing the Sergeants and the Patrol Officers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing no one opposed, the Memorandums of Understanding are approved. We will move on to seven D, Adoption of a Resolution Accepting a Multi-Family Property Tax Exemption Agreement for the Sedgwick Multi-Family Project. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you. Before you tonight is a resolution and a preliminary agreement for multi-family tax exemption for the construction of 136 new apartment units on five buildings near Sedgwick Road and the Fred Meyer. The developer is seeking an eight-year tax exemption, and the city attorney has prepared a multi-family housing limited property tax exemption agreement for the mayor's signature. If you remember, a few years ago, we were lobbied by one of the property owners here to be included in our multi-family tax exemption area, and the city council agreed to expand the incentive to this property, but then directed staff to begin working on updates to the tax exemption program to figure out if and when we would expand it in the future, and the Land Use Committee has been working on this for several months. Our Land Use Committee actually hasn't met for several months at this point, but we are meeting again in June, and will resume discussions of multi-family tax exemptions. But for now, this agreement can go forward because it is eligible under our existing program. The recommendation is to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to accept and sign a multi-family housing limited property tax exemption agreement between the city and Cedric Ventures LLC as presented.
Is there a motion? Councilmember Deener, I guess.
Yeah, my hand was fading out. So, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept and sign a multi-family housing limited property tax exemption agreement in the city. Sedgwick Ventures LLC is presented.
Second by Councilmember Clausen, the main motion by Councilmember Deener. Questions for Mr. Bond on this matter? I have one, Mr. Bond. On page 30 of our, 29 of our packet is the application, and the program requirements, it lists a number of criteria, and number three says, "At least 50% of the proposed units must be developed for permanent owner occupation." That doesn't mean it needs to be owner occupied, does it? Or it just means that the property has to be occupied, correct?
Yeah, they don't have to be owner occupied, they can either be rental or owner occupied units per code. This is actually an older application that probably needs to be updated, but we're waiting for our code changes to do that work.
Okay, that sentence just wasn't clear to me. Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Kuchardi.
Yeah, on bullet point number six, it might be just a nit, but should that say eight-year limited property tax exemption?
And which page are you on?
I'm on page...
Twenty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, 24, bullet point six, I mean, maybe it's a defined term, but okay, eight-year, just fits a nit, but.
Yeah, I think the resolution was, or the agreement was written, so you would select eight or 12, and we deleted one and not the other, but it may not be clear as possible.
I think the Land Use Committee is meeting June 1st, if I remember correctly, and I saw this on their agenda to restart that process. So, Councilmember Ashby.
This particular eight-year does not require any of the units to be low or moderate income, or does it?
That's correct. The eight-year exemption does not require low-income housing, but what we learned with the Overlook Apartments was that, other than some accounting requirements, the market-rate units qualified as affordable, and they really didn't have to subsidize rent at all by artificially setting the rent lower. It was more of a tracking issue and a reporting issue for the owner of the building to make sure that they were verifying incomes, and I think a lot of developers have decided it's not worth the extra effort to do all of that, because if they mess up in their accounting, it can cause the whole exemption to fall apart because they're not fulfilling the agreement.
You'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution to accept a multi-family property tax exemption agreement for the Cedric Multi-Family Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. We are to our last business item, which is Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Contract with Murray Smith, Inc., for the 2020-2021 McCormick Woods Well Number 11 Phase One Site Improvement 30% Schematic Project. The bond, Dorsey.
Yes, thank you, honor of council members, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I had a Teams thing earlier, and it wasn't working very well, so. As a function of the 2019-2020 Biennial Budget Mid-Cycle Amendment Process to Add Ready Design in Engineer's Estimate for the Well 1311 Site Improvement Project was identified as a priority task for the Public Works Department. Therefore, on January 31st, 2020, the Public Works Department published a request for qualifications for the 2020-2021 McCormick Woods Well Number 11 Site Improvement Project Add Ready Design Bit Support in Engineer of Record. By the February 14th, 2020 deadline, no statement of qualifications were received. On confirmation of the required procurement process, given that no responses to the advertisement were received, Public Works Department contacted a qualified firm from the current MRSC roster. Public Works Department contacted a qualified firm from the current MRSC roster, Murray Smith Incorporated. On April thirteenth, 2020, a proposal from Murray Smith was received. The city simultaneously analyzed budget and timeline factors, including the current pandemic, and it was decided to implement a phased approach. Excuse me, for the project. Therefore, on May eighth, 2020, after having met onsite. The public work department staff, Murray Smith provided a new proposal. For the 2020-2021 McCormick Woods well eleven, phase one. Side improvements, which is the schematic design project in an amount of ninety-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. This item is necessary and routine for the following reasons. This action is time sensitive to, to construction timeframes and budget and supports the continuation of the previously discussed essential and critical water system. Improvement project. Staff recommends adoption of resolution zero-one-five dash two-zero, thereby approving contract C zero-four-eight dash two-zero. With Murray Smith Incorporated for the 2020-2021 McCormick Woods well eleven, phase one. Site improvements, schematic thirty percent. Design project in an amount. Ninety-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and documenting professional services procurement procedures.
Councilmember Lucarelli.
I move to adopt resolution number zero-one-five dash two-zero, thereby approving contract number C zero-four-eight dash two-zero. With Murray Smith, Inc. For the 2020-2020-2021 McCormick Woods well number eleven, phase one. Site improvements, schematic thirty percent sign project in the amount of ninety-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. And documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
I was like, councilmember Deener, was that at the second?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, this is a motion by councilmember Lucarelli, second by councilmember Deener. Questions of Mr. Dorsey, Mr. Councilmember Kuchardi? You're muted, sir.
Thank you. Now that we're, look like we're trying to phase this in, Mark. Could there be any unintended consequences of this? I mean, are you gonna have to, to go to bid on phase two or phase three? How does this change maybe the potential outcome timeline? Expenses by having to kind of seg this out? Not to say it's not a, a great plan, but just what can we expect in the future?
Well, one is because we advertised it originally as the full ad-ready design. And then we've come back and actually phased it. That sets us up to just hire Murray Smith moving forward where, where we got hung up was when we did. For the roundabout design with Transpo. We only advertise originally as a sixty percent. And so we had to re-advertise, we couldn't just give them the hundred percent design. So, so we're good there. And then when we received the first proposal. It was. Ten times this amount because there was a lot of guessing. And not understanding. Everything that had been developed. So it was kind of really a shotgun scope and budget and schedule. That just said for a typical well project, we're gonna do. A through Z and it's gonna take X amount of time. And, and we looked at and said, well, no, you don't need to do all these things. So that's why we're specifically scaling it back. To get this thirty percent, kind of like we're doing with the Marina Pump Station. To specifically come up with something that we can support. And be very expeditious to getting to that point, then we can move very quickly into the. Right to the ad-ready design. Without a lot of unnecessary. Scoping items. Just weren't needed. So this is gonna actually get us to the finish line quicker and it's gonna get us there a lot cheaper.
Thank you.
Good question. Councilmember Rose Pepe?
Mark, just out of curiosity, any thoughts about why we didn't receive any statement of qualifications?
Yeah, I think that there's. I think a lot of firms. Were. Looking at our current water system engineer as this being their patch in their. Their area and that they weren't gonna get the work because it takes a lot of time and effort even to put together a statement of qualifications. It still takes marketing top dollars. And I think right now with COVID. There are a lot of firms that are really struggling. To, to be busy, so they don't really have a lot of extra overhead marketing dollars. And so between that. And assuming that we were gonna have BHC do it, which we have enough work on their plate. That we decided that wasn't gonna be the best way. I think that was just a general conception out there. But to our benefit, Murray Smith is a very good firm. They have pretty much half the staff that used to be at. See on their staff now, so there's continuity there. So. I think the way we're going about this is. The best way to get us to an ad-ready. And ultimately, so we can get an engineer's estimate out of that. That's what Noah's waiting to get.
Thank you.
An accurate engineer's estimate. That's what I was always looking for.
I compare this to the Marina Pump Station project.
Well, we've actually, we've actually got that back down to. You know, a six, seven million dollar project.
Yeah.
In the engineer's estimate.
Okay.
I'm actually more on.
We've, we've cut a few things out. But that's called value engineering.
Value engineering.
That's the fancy name for whack and stuff.
All right, back to well eleven. Any more questions for Mr. Dorsey on well eleven?
I'm not sure if you know. Oh, there she is. Okay.
Who's that? What were you concerned about, Brandy?
I didn't see Cindy on the screen, so I didn't know if we lost her or. Something else happened, but she popped back up on mine.
Okay.
I have an unstable connection. Thank you.
There's worse conditions.
Glad to be more stable next time.
I know.
All right, last round of questions for Mr. Dorsey on well eleven. All right, with that, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Murray Smith, Inc. For. McCormick Woods well number eleven, phase one, site improvements, thirty percent schematic. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none opposed, the resolution is approved. We have one discussion item this evening. Debbie Lund has joined us for a, the lively topic of furlough policy considerations. I know you, the council has given me the authority to amend personnel policies and report them to you. But we don't have a policy, so we felt this was important enough to. Bring before you and have a discussion. And with that, I will end this off to Debbie Lund.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. First, I want to start this conversation by just commanding the management group and the mayor of the city. We have not furloughed, laid off, reduced hours of any staff member since the advent of COVID nineteen. And I think that's a true testament to your leadership team that you've assembled. They are keeping everybody busy and productive. And, and so I want to start this conversation with that acknowledgement. Secondly, if the, in the event that we do need to look at some reductions on the staffing hours. Or positions, we do not have a furlough policy at this moment in time. A furlough would be a temporary reduction of hours, and that can look a lot of different ways. It could be. A week or like you, you know, Rista Washington Hospital is doing a week to eight weeks for their. Affected employees. It could be every Friday, City Hall closes at twelve. I mean, it can look just lots of different ways. So we're writing a policy to kind of. Be broad enough to cover different scenarios. But in the, working through that policy, there's some considerations that we wanted some input on. The first of those considerations is what to do with. Other leave benefits. So under our current policies. If I work forty hours a week, I accrue a certain rate of vacation and a certain rate of sick leave. What happens if my hours get reduced? Do my accrual rates go down? Secondly, what about my insurance benefits? Majority of our cities are covered under the Association of Washington Cities Insurance Plan, and they will allow us. To maintain someone's healthcare benefits even if they're in furlough status. So we had to, had to furlough you for, let's just. Things, the month of July, we would be able to continue to pay insurance benefits through the AWC if we chose to do so. So those are the two kind of cost drivers. Of this policy that we wanted to be sure you had a chance to weigh in on.
Question, councilmember Kuchardi?
Couple of questions there, Debbie. Under current policy, if someone's on another type of leave, sick leave, vacation, or whatever it's defined in here, are they accruing? Additional leave while they're on leave?
They are as long as they're on paid leave. If they go on unpaid leave, they would not accrue.
So I wonder if there isn't kind of a, a standard kind of already set there that you could, you could apply that to. And then I had a second question. If someone else has a question, go ahead, I'll, it'll come back to me.
So councilmember Kuchardi went, and I'll call on councilmember Ashby after I. That was when Debbie and I had been talking about this and Noah. That was really kind of where we were driving this, is we felt health insurance probably shouldn't be touched. And that we should, because if it's a furlough, it's intended to be a temporary situation, you're wanting to retain that employee. And, but just like you're saying, Debbie had said that, you know, if we're not paying them, they probably shouldn't accrue those other. Leave banks for hours that they didn't, didn't work, but that was kind of, but. Once again, we don't have a policy and that's why we're checking in with, with you folks. So councilmember Ashby?
Well, no, you just, I would just echo what you said, just from. Personal observation on it. I could support not accruing additional time when they were on furlough. But if we furloughed someone and we have therefore reduced their income. I would not at that point want them to then have to pay their medical. Benefits. So I would be supportive of, of the city maintaining them, their, their insurance benefits.
Councilmember Claussen?
Yeah, my experience is exactly the same, that when they're on unpaid status, they would not accrue. But the other thing is when we. We pretty much pay for health insurance on a monthly basis, so if. If you pay the first day of the month, they have the insurance at no extra cost for the rest of the month, basically, so. That's kind of what predicated the whole concept of, you know, okay, fine. Furlough was another opportunity that you can bring folks back quickly. So keep their benefits flowing, but when they're on. Furlough, they wouldn't accrue any kind of leave.
Councilmember Deener, do you have a question?
No, just that I, I support that there be a commensurate reduction in accrual. That's prorated to the leave, but also I agree with the sentiment that we're hearing about. Medical insurance as well.
Like, really, yeah?
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with that also. I do have a question. Is there any kind of time limit for someone being on furlough?
Debbie, that's, I defer to you.
I am not aware of any statutory limitation on it. I know from unemployment, they just. I don't care what you call it. You're not working, your hours are reduced, you qualify for unemployment as long as you meet the income threshold, so. Charlie, because I'm welcome, you're welcome to correct me if there is some statutory limit I'm not thinking of.
I'm not aware of anything either.
Is there anything tied to benefits, though, that maybe it can extend beyond thirteen weeks in order for the benefits to stay active?
Yeah, I wonder.
Not from the Association of Washington Cities at this point, and again, is. Uncharted territory. This is not a usual benefit that AWC would roll out. They're doing this to their membership because of COVID. So. Yeah, I'm not really sure.
I've not really ever heard of anything like that. I mean, for. If a person separates, they have the opportunity through Cobra to continue their benefits. They just pay the bill for. As long as they want to pay the Cobra.
But that's a termination event, not a, not a furlough event.
No, but my point is, is that you can continue with the benefits one way or another for an extended period of time. I don't. I've never heard of a limit either, not that I'm an expert.
Cobra does have a limit. It's eighteen, thirty-six, or thirty-nine months, depending on the reasons why you lost your coverage. But, yeah, that's a different scenario.
And like I said, we're, you know. We're hopeful that we can continue to find work for everybody to do. We're catching up on all kinds of back projects. We had, matter of fact, somebody today from the court working down in finance department for a half day, and they'll be here all week. Scanning batches of financial records for preparing for our laser fish project and. We've got somebody from the clerk's office helping out in HR, so we're, we're racing department. Boundaries right now because there's work to be done. Yeah, and not necessarily the job you did before, but there is work to be done. And as long as. We have work, we're gonna, you know, do our best to keep everybody as unemployed, and I don't want to implement this tool. But it's easier to have these discussions now versus, you know, Friday, I'm needing to do something and we don't have a policy yet. Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah, I just want to go back to what Sean was asking about. The limitations on a furlough. If, if we furloughed someone, should there be a time limit? That is classified as a furlough. Say like, I mean, would we have somebody out there for six months or twelve months, or is it going to be a much more temporary timeframe?
I'd hesitate to put that in a policy if, if it meets our business, you know. Gosh, in the economic downturn, how long did the county close on Fridays? It was more than a year, maybe.
Two years of furlough Fridays.
True, yeah, two years. And, you know, good employees are. If we can, if we can keep somebody that way, even though it's not ideal, I'd want to use that tool as long as I possibly could. You know, so I, I guess I'd prefer to be silent in that, in that area if I can be.
And I wasn't thinking just a day a week. I was thinking if someone were off. You know, just. Totally for six months, you know, is that, or a year?
Yeah, I think that's a layoff. I, I think a furlough tool is typically, is typically where, and what I'm seeing out there is a reduction in your hours. You know, and that's, my wife's employer right now is implementing that. And so you're, you're, you're losing eight hours a week or eight hours every other week. You know, for a period of time until things return to normal.
Okay.
I would assume that it would be somewhat up to the individual employee as well if. You know, if I'm running out of unemployment, I'm gonna go look for work versus starving to death, waiting for you to call me back, so. I might resign before you call me back.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna basically say that it's really the employee that's gonna. Their lifestyle is gonna be affected whether they got laid off or furloughed, and they're only gonna, if they're a good employee and we're furloughing them because we want them here. There's a very good chance that they're gonna get scooped up by somebody else because they're a valuable employee. So I think the market will dictate. The appropriate timeframe for the appropriate action.
Councilmember Kuchardi?
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, I think I commend all of you for going through this. I think it is a, a great tool to have, right? You just to. You don't necessarily know exactly what circumstances may lead you down a certain path, but I think this can, it is very effective. And in these times. This has been deployed across many, many, many industries and. And there's a lot of different things with people having different leave banks that they can dip into before unemployment, and. You can create a lot of win-win scenarios through it. So I think it's great to have the, the policy in, in the toolbox.
So with your, sounds like I have concurrence here. We, we will bring this back in two weeks with a formal policy that you guys will pass via resolution, so. Because I just felt there was, since I don't have a policy to modify, this is really something new that. If it was appropriate, I felt it was appropriate to bring up before the council. With that, we'll move on to committee reports, and I see the finance committee is gonna meet on Tuesday. June ninth in two weeks. And they haven't met since our last meeting and. We continue to monitor our projects and financials and, and will report, we should have some financial numbers. For the council to share next week and councilmember Kuchardi, or excuse me, Claussen. Shared with me earlier today, he had the countywide numbers. We don't have our citywide numbers, but. shared with me earlier today, he had the countywide numbers. We don't have our citywide numbers, but county was down 16% for March. So they, they just got their numbers. So we should see ours later this week. And when we get them, I'll, I'll send an email out to you guys to, to share that number. We've been performing the last year or so slightly better than the county as a whole. We don't have a, we have, they have a mall that's been in a continual decline due to mail, you know, online retail is probably the biggest factor. And our, we've had an uptick because of housing that was turned off too for a while. So tell you when I've got real numbers and we'll report them. So economic development tourism, just met, didn't you?
Yeah, we met a week ago on Monday. And really the two main topics that we discussed that day was we, and you all were kind of privy to some of this, was the new city communications plan that was also presented at last week's work study. And so we got introduced to Mr. Ryan Hader, who I know is on this call today and kind of walked us through kind of that plan moving forward. Obviously, we discussed it as a full council last Tuesday, and I think we're all pretty excited about that new addition. And then we also were exposed to and took a high level look at the new draft downtown subarea plan, which also was emailed to each of you subsequently. And there's a ton of information in that. I think it's, it's pretty interesting. I hope you get a chance to peruse through that. I know there's a lot more work to do before we see subsequent drafts. But really, those two agenda items were the, were the main topics of discussion.
They were. Thank you for your report. Utility committee, did you guys meet or not? I can't, having trouble keeping up. So the, that's right.
Yes, we actually did. And it was so packed. There was so much information. If ever there's a meeting to, that you would like to listen to, to catch up on what's going on with utilities, that I think would be the one. Basically, the big thing, big takeaway is that we're working on the capital improvement plans for the water and sewer systems. And there are going to be quite a few additions. So we're looking at a pretty sizable number. But that is a big thing. The well 13, good progress has been made. And it looks like we're still going to be on target with that. Just, everything is costing more and a little overwhelming. I felt after the committee meeting was done, there's, utilities are so pricey. All I can say is, Mark, you did a really good job of blowing me away. But anyway, that, our next meeting is going to be June 16th. And again, I will send some information around that will help all of the council members to see where we're at with various things.
So the minute, I just finished those today. And I guess they're, they're post, they're in the clerk's S drive. So however, you guys disseminate that information. So the minutes are done. I did want to note that we did introduce a topic that's going to be a game changer for everybody, which is the nutrient cap discussion for treatment plants. That's really just, just starting, you'll be talking about it at your next SAC committee in more detail. But this is really the game changer for the cost of utilities. In my opinion, for sewer service. And it's also going to start really infringing on growth management and predictability and reservation certificates and things of that nature. So this is going to be a really interesting topic as we move forward.
Interesting, not in a good way.
No, no, not, you're talking billions and millions of dollars.
On a positive note though, well 13, we did the test pumping last week. And we were hoping to achieve 1,500 gallons a minute and we pumped it for 24 hours. And it exceeded our expectations. And we've got preliminary results.
And plus, we're not running into the
Yeah, manganese.
And we're not running into the iron manganese problem, right? Still?
Correct. We believe we, we're, we found a very good and pure source of water that may not have the treatment issues that some of our other wells have, because we're much deeper. So the fingers crossed there. So sewer advisory, I believe that meeting got canceled and is rescheduled for June 17th, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Land use, I see scheduled for June 1st. It hasn't met since our last council meeting. And transportation committee was scheduled for tonight and was canceled. Well, I, we've got a number of things going on there, but nothing that was time sensitive. So we'll be meeting soon on that. Lodging tax, anything to report there, Jay?
Not at this time.
Okay. And chimes and lights, I know you, Matt.
Yes, we did. And we're just working to try to overcome the obstacles that we don't even know what, that we have yet. But lots of creative juice. People are looking to think of ideas to make it a good event. And we're moving forward.
Okay. Beck, do you have anything for your outside agencies? And or just seconds, Councilmember Kachardi, you had a question?
Yeah, just a real quick go back to the finance committee on June 9th. I know the time's been a bit of a moving target. Is five o'clock the confirmed time for that particular meeting? I know it's been 5:30, 5:15. Just wanted to confirm.
It's your committee. When would you like to meet? The agenda here says five o'clock.
Well, I'm on it, but I wouldn't say it's my committee, but Noah, I don't know what you anticipate your agenda to be. How much time would, would you like?
I think, I think we probably do 5:15 or 5:30. And I would actually almost ask you, the community members are wanting to meet not on the ninth, but on the 16th, to give us more time to close out the month of May. The ninth is just going to be tight, to get all of the financials and the monthly report done. So another week would be helpful.
I'm fine with that.
Well, it runs into utility meeting on the 16th.
It says this is the 7th. According to this agenda, I'm not saying it's right.
Well, utility says the 16th.
Yes.
Are there, is there crossover in those committees? John is, John, yes, John's on both of those committees.
How about the 23rd?
That is when the
Transportation.
You're stuck with the ninth or a different night of the week? I mean, what else are you guys in finance working on?
I hope you were directing that to Noah.
I can't name them, but I just, just tried to get a reaction. And reports due tomorrow. I mean, that'll be done.
I mean, do you want to look at the 17th? So just, or the 17th, you've got SAC. Do we have a conflict with SAC too?
Yes.
Okay. So then what about the 18th, Thursday, the 18th?
That doesn't work for me.
Well, we can hold the ninth and just play it by ear next week or so, see what the agenda looks like. Because sometimes we have a light agenda and we've decided to cancel those meetings when we don't have much to share. And if that's the case, if we have too light of agenda, I can always send out the monthly report to the finance committee once we get that complete.
Should we just do the ninth at say 5:30? If they jump, it's going to be light?
Because it'll be light or, because we may not have all the information.
Or not at all.
Yeah. Yeah. So let's just pencil for 5:30 on the ninth, subject to change.
Great, thank you.
All right. Okay, Beck, did you have something, anything to share on outside committees?
Um, no, the only thing KRCC, tomorrow, I believe the Trans-Tech group will be doing the evaluations for the federal transportation funding. And the, that will be going forward to KRCC's executive board next Tuesday for final approval. Am I correct on that, Mr. Dorsey? Are you involved in that?
Yeah, Trans-Tech is tomorrow, but then Trans-Pall is Thursday.
Thursday, right. Trans-Pall is Thursday to go over Trans-Tech recommendation and then forwarding that to the executive board for the first Tuesday in June. That's primarily what we're working on immediately.
Received that 2.2 million out of the regional.
Yeah. Congratulations, John.
I know, not as much as you wanted or needed, but rather than a kick in the face, I guess.
Yeah, the Southworth Terminal, if anybody hadn't heard that yet. So for a study.
Can, can I just get off topic? Mark, have you ever used what's called pair wise evaluation?
Never heard of it.
Okay, we used it at the RPTO last week for some funding they were doing. And it was kind of an interesting process. We can talk offline about it.
Yeah, maybe we can bring it up next year.
Yeah.
We're still doing our unofficial scoring method.
Right.
All right. Any other outside agencies to report on? I've got a couple. The health board, obviously, we've talked about this, is meeting tomorrow for a special meeting to vote on the variance application that we talked about earlier. I have an appointment to the, that goes to a countywide agency for the public facilities board. And Bill Mahan, former county commissioner, has been our representative for the last four years. I followed the county's process. We typically, I typically don't get anybody that wants to serves on these boards or commissions. And so I follow the county's process and I posted it. And I actually got an extremely qualified applicant. I interviewed him. I really appreciate Bill and all the work he's done for us. But one of the criticisms that I've gotten is that Bill doesn't live in the city of Port Orchard. Lives just outside the city limits. He does live in South Kitsap. So the interview individual that applied and that I interviewed is, his name is John Morrissey. He lives in McCormick Woods. Moved to our community, I believe from Nebraska, Nebraska, seven years ago. And he's the manager of the Kitsap Credit Union, and of a Kitsap Credit Union. And I was extremely impressed with him when I interviewed him. And I've decided that, that to move his name forward to the county commissioners for confirmation for the public facilities boards. So if you see Bill, please can thank him for his years of service. Not only is our, our, is a port commissioner, a county commissioner, and as our representative on the public facilities board, because he's done good things for our community. I, AWC is holding their, not holding their conference in Kennewick, but they are holding it virtually from June 23rd to the 25th. And all the courses and classes or sessions will be held online. So I strongly encourage you, if you've got time to participate that, please do. On June, June 25th, from 10:00 AM to noon, are the, is the general meeting and the elections. And we're allowed to have three voting members. I plan to attend that since I'm up for election. And reelection on the board. I'm hopeful that Councilmember Ashby usually participates in that. Are you going to be available? Okay. All right. And I would love to have a third council member participating if someone was available. And you, does anybody, you want to glance at their calendar or get back to me, maybe tomorrow? Couple of hours, you'll have to sit through everybody's speeches online and then vote. But it's a big, you know, Association of Washington Cities is probably one of the better associations and organizations that I'm involved with. And I'd encourage you to, to get active or at least participate in that process. So I know we have
Today?
The 25th, from 10 to noon.
Yeah, that's the same day as the PSRC General Assembly.
Yes, it has. And that has been moved to nine to 10 to, because I pointed out that it conflicted, but they're both virtual.
I can do it if no one else is interested.
Anybody else dying to see me sweat bullets? All right, I got John down as a voting delegate. All right, I'm gonna, that's all I have for outside agencies. Where am I on this agenda?
Your report.
Report, mayor?
My mayor's report, what do you know? Still me. So I emailed you the job descriptions, updated job descriptions for the police sergeants more than a week ago. And I just want to, now I'm just reporting to you that, so I sent them the electronically, if you didn't have any questions, it was really, the chief reworked those, updated them. I did, you did some fine work on that. So just making sure you're aware of it. I forwarded you also an email about a request from local high, the local seniors wanting to do a mural in our downtown. I really appreciate the gesture. I have concerns. It seems like every time we get free art, I, in the end, I have regrets, whether it be a sculpture or a chandelier. We we don't, the, the artist seems slighted somehow, or what we get isn't what we thought we were going to get. So one idea I had is along the pathway past the very nice, the chalk wall we have, there's a wall that's about four or five feet tall. If we maybe made that available annually to our seniors, I mean, I'm just throwing spaghetti at the wall. Or maybe we're just not interested, you know, I, I don't know. So Councilmember Ashby, you have a, a thought on this?
Well, what I'm going to say, and the mayor and I had a conversation about this, is it happens once or twice a year, we have questions or opportunities for donated art. And I really think it would, when, when we have time, is to put together some sort of public art policy so that we don't have to review this and, you know, with each time it comes up. And I know that here several years ago, our intern actually did a report on where more your three dimensional or sculptured art could go. So there's already been some work on it. I realize it's not high priority. But if we had a policy or at least guidelines, we wouldn't have to make decisions on individual projects.
I found that, at least here at City Hall, the best art we have is stuff we've paid for and gone through a formal process on versus the, the one offs. And I really, really appreciate the gesture and what these students are trying to do, but I just have reservations.
Well, and also remember as a mural goes, when I first came here in 2008, the city council was debating on how they were going to repaint the mirror on the side of the library. And that became a really big expensive deal. So a mural isn't going to last forever. And you're going to end up with this thing that somebody is going to have to come in and redo or paint over. So
Any additional thoughts out there? You guys are just going to hang me out and then let me turn these kids down on my own, aren't you?
Well, I think I had a good idea. I think it's probably would be wise to develop some policy that we could point people toward. I agree with Mark. If the mural, mural is done right, with a maintenance issue or something that washes away. And I think there's, there's a lot to it. So
Yeah, or vandalized. Yeah, okay. I, I, I get, I get your gist. So we, earlier, last week, we ordered 500 disposable masks and six touchless hand sanitizer stations. We're, Noah and I are still working through a process with Commerce to determine what the rules are about our CARESAC money. I would really like to give some of these, and hopefully we can figure it out by the end of the week, because if we get ready to open up our businesses, maybe our businesses don't have the same access to these PPEs that, that we do. And I would like to give Mr. Murphy's organization and our local POPSa group, you know, some masks to get started with so that the, so, but we're still working through a process there. And I know Mr. Claussen's organization is also the mask, we've ordered our disposable and Mr. Claussen's working on a procurement process on a very good price on some reusable masks too. So we might purchase a few different options. And I think it's going to be important as we open City Hall to be offering, at least offering some masks to our employees. offering some masks, uh, to our employees, uh, for their, for their use. So.
About a curiosity, were those, um, sanitizing dispensers or the cartridges, were they on back order? Are you, are you able to actually source those?
We don't know when we're getting, we have six of them on order. They were, they were over a thousand dollars and, um, I hope we get them before Christmas. But yes, they're on order. They're touchless, they're really nice. Um, and you're right, they're on, they are on back order. So I'll let you know when we have them. Hopefully that we get them before we open the doors. Uh, Steve Havert, our IT manager, is giving us quotes to, on some, uh, a video conferencing, uh, TV and a camera that we could roll out in the council chambers. Um, I think, um, meeting remotely is gonna be, uh, a bigger part of our future. And, uh, so we're, we're getting some quotes on that and I, I believe that'll be appropriate for use with our COVID, for our CARES Act money, uh, be a remote technology. So, uh, looking into that. I read an article, um, over the weekend, uh, from the National League of Cities and they're predicting nationally a 32% decline in city revenues across, uh, the nation related to COVID. And, um, I think the projections that we gave you a while back were doom and gloom at 40%. So let's, uh, hope the National League of Cities is right or it's not even that bad, but time will, time will tell. And, uh, I have a meeting set for Noah and I, Commissioner Grito and one of her staff members, uh, to sit down and try to negotiate agreement on those Bethel properties. So it's on the calendar for two weeks out. So that's all I have on the mayor's report. Um, staff reports. Charlie, do you have anything to share?
I do. Just briefly, I wanted to start and flag for council a conversation about fireworks and firework regulations in the city in light of COVID. Um, as you are all aware, gatherings of large groups of folks are not, uh, permitted until we enter phase four. Um, and it's estimated that that phase is not going to commence for most, uh, counties until mid-July. And as a result, many cities are canceling or delaying firework displays that happen on an annual basis. Um, by state statute, the sale of fireworks are limited to the 4th of July and New Year's. Um, and then Port Orchard has, uh, restricted the use, the, the same restrictions are in place under your code, except that public displays are authorized, um, to occur at any time if authorized by council pursuant to state law. State law has no, no restriction as to when a public display, display can occur as long as you tick all the boxes for approval by, uh, fire authority, the local agency and whatnot. Uh, my understanding is that, uh, the Fathoms of Fun event has applied for, um, but is seeking to either withdraw or delay its application. And Brandy, please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, they may be looking to hold the event layer later in the year, uh, if the governor's phasing, uh, allows for gatherings larger, um, later in the year. So I wanted to flag for you that under the language that's in Port Orchard Municipal Code 560050, we may be coming back to you, council, for approval to authorize an event to be, to occur, uh, that event to occur at a later date in the year. I, I have no specific knowledge of the date proposed or if the date has even been proposed, but we wanted to flag that that is the process for approval for a public display. I know many people have also been getting questions about the sale of fireworks and I wanted to, um, answer that question as well. So consumer fireworks are only permitted to be sold, um, at around 4th of July and around New Year's, and that's by state statute. So the city has no authority to deviate, um, from that state statute. We're anticipating the governor may weigh in and may alter, uh, when fireworks can be sold under state statute. Um, but, uh, he has not done so at this point. So if you're getting questions about the consumer sale of fireworks, that is the answer. And the one caveat, you're allowed to restrict the sale of fireworks further, but you can't move the sale of firework window, um, uh, for consumer fireworks. You can for public displays of fireworks. So just wanted to flag that distinction for you and, and give you the heads up that that may be coming depending on what Fathoms of Fun decides to do with their event this year.
And they have set a date. Um, the date that they want to do the fireworks display and the annual parade, um, is the weekend of September 18th.
Okay. Specifically the night, Saturday of the 19th, I believe.
Yeah, it is. You're right. The 19th. Okay, great. So that will be coming back to you.
Okay, hopefully.
Hopefully.
So Mr. Bond, do you have something to share?
Yes, I've got a couple of things. Um, first of all, um, housing starts in the city. We have now issued year to date 50 new single family residential building permits. That's for, for totally new houses and that's close to what we issued for all of last year. So we're, we're, uh, fairly far ahead on that. We actually also have 16 ready to issue permits that are just waiting for payment and another 27 in for review right now. And so we're, we're doing our best, uh, to get permits, uh, in and out of our, uh, department. And, uh, on top of all that, we have two large apartment projects, which is not typical for any particular year. We have 230 apartments between two projects, including the one you provided, uh, the multi-family tax exemption on tonight. And so, uh, hopefully we'll, once we see, uh, our financial reports, hopefully our department is doing our part to try to offset any hit that we're going to take from, from sales tax. Um, my second report for the night is on the South Kitsap Community Event Center. I know the mayor mentioned this, I think at the beginning of the meeting. Um, uh, council members, um, Lucarelli, Rosa Pepe and Deener, tomorrow at 2 o'clock, we are going to meet to go over the three proposals that, uh, from the consultants that we're interviewing and you've been emailed interview questions and I would encourage you to look at those before the meeting so that, uh, you can have input on any possible questions that you'd like to ask each of the consultants. And, uh, just a, a general comment on that, we've, we've tried not to ask things that were provided in the RFQ. Uh, we want to ask questions that get them to open up about how they'll approach the project. And so if the questions seem, uh, like not the obvious things that you would ask, that is why. And so we're seeking to interview consultants in the second week of June. So bring your calendars tomorrow with you so that we can pick some interview dates, uh, to, to hopefully hire somebody to design our community event center.
So, and, and following up on that, we had nine firms apply. We've narrowed the field. There was a technical review committee that was done, uh, primarily by Mark's staff, members of the planning staff, uh, that did the technical review, narrowed it to three firms, uh, and, and those three firms are who, this committee, which is not the, the non-technical group. Uh, and so it'll be myself, Mark, Nick, Jill Jean from the library, Mike Walton from the Public Facilities District, council members Lucarelli, Rosa Pepe and Deener.
Ian's taking my place because I've got a conflict with Trans-Tact tomorrow.
Okay, is he gonna take your place in the future meeting too?
I think so. We'll see.
All right.
All right. Nick, any idea how long that, that will take tomorrow, starting at two?
Um, tomorrow, I don't think it should take more than an hour, um, hour and a half tops, but, um, if you need to, to leave early, I think the main thing we need to do is you go first if you have to get out of there early.
Um, plan for though, the date we pick those interviews, it will likely be an all-day event.
Correct. We're planning interviews that will last 75 minutes and then we'll need to take a break for discussion and just a general break in between interviews. And so we're looking at the, the second week of June. I think that's the week of the 8th. Um, and so we need to find some availability that week if possible.
And there was a, there was a doodle poll put out last week about that, that might assist that process too. Okay, and, uh, I went on, Nick shared with me too, the, the, one of the apartment projects is the Rush Project at Sedgwick and Sydney on the corner there on that vacant pad. And, uh, I thought it was kind of cool that, uh, the, the ground floor units, uh, will be live work. So they have a, a, uh, commercial component to them.
Actually, that's not one of the two apartment projects I mentioned. They have done a pre-application review or they're doing design review before they submit their application. That would actually be a third apartment project that might come in this year. Um, but they want to make sure that they're, before they spend money on architectural plans, they want to go through the design review process to make sure that we, there's nothing glaring that needs to be fixed before they spend money on an architect.
Add another 65 units to the number he gave you. Pushing 300. Okay, um, where are we at? Mr. Crocker?
Um, I don't have anything in particular mentioned now than that, uh, we're getting to the end of May. I'm trying to close out the annual report file by this Friday.
Okay. Mr. Dorsey?
I have nothing.
Oh, man.
I mean, I could, I could, if I want me to.
We just got 10 minutes back of our lives, guys.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Right. Chief, words of wisdom from the police department?
Uh, I don't know if we have any words of wisdom, but, uh, again, I want to thank everybody for, uh, helping us get with the schedule. This is gonna, this is a pretty big deal for us. Um, I also wanted to address something I, I believe was brought up in land use. Uh, we are continuing to work on, uh, some parking and some homelessness issues up off of Harrison. Um, we've been working on it earlier this year and Ms. Archer and I were, were starting up on that project and unfortunately we got derailed by a pandemic. So, um, that's continuing. Um, I did speak with, uh, some of the staff today, just to make sure that you guys knew that that problem has at least reduced. Um, you know, we've been working with some of the neighbors and with the church, but, uh, I just wanted to update you guys on that, that we have not left that completely off the table. Um, so hopefully, uh, by the end of the week, Ms. Archer and I'll be able to find some time and we'll have more of an update for you next week.
And that's the issue that, uh, we, one of, at one of our last council meetings before we went virtual, that, uh, then one of the neighbors came and, and talked to us and, we said we would get that on a committee agenda and, and address it. And it was scheduled for, uh, next week's land use committee meeting, but we're just not, as the chief said, we're just not ready for that. So we're punting that farther a month out. So, uh, Mr. Clausen, when you adjust your camera, you freak me out because your hand comes right at me.
Yeah.
All right, with that, um, I think our meeting is now adjourned, unless there's something for the good of the order.
No, Mark, can you stay on for a second?
Mayor, did, I see citizens comment on here again. Did you want to offer Matt another opportunity?
Murphy, uh, uh, we weren't gonna take any, you have anything to share with us from the Chamber of Commerce?
I do, yeah. It's, uh, it's kind of nice being the only other person on here. I don't know if Brandy's gonna start a timer or not and, uh, and limit me here, but, um, I would like to say that I think the PPE thing is an important step, um, to demonstrate on, on the part of the city, you know, its willingness to help with the businesses. And, um, you know, the consumer confidence is, is gonna be critical going forward and making sure that, that our retail businesses, all of our businesses, you know, present themselves as a safe place to shop is going to be really important. Um, also, I got, Ms. Archer alluded to the, uh, phase three, or you know, that, that question came up. I'm hoping that, you know, when we move from phase two to phase three, that, um, it, things can move faster than we did from phase one to phase two. If the governor doesn't move the, the target and the ball anymore, um, you know, if we can continue on this, with this, um, this, this rate of, of non-infection, hopefully we can move from phase two to phase three and then maybe phase three to phase four, um, ideally before the end of the year. And, um, the last thing I wanted to say was on, on the art and the mural, something you may want to suggest is that, you know, if they can find a, a building owner that would allow, you know, some temporary art, obviously with, um, you know, an artist, I mean, a, a building owner needs to see the art, just like I would expect you guys to see the art before you let anybody move forward. But as near as I can tell, Nick, uh, murals and artwork on the side of a building is not governed by the sign code, um, as long as it's not advertising or signage. So, you know, private, private building is, um, is fair game. That's all I have. Thank you, guys. Uh, thanks for all the hard work you guys are doing and, and sticking with this. I know it's, it has been fun for anybody.
Thanks for your comments, Matt. Okay, Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
Uh, just a quick one about when we would, uh, anticipate, uh, going back to chambers.
That's a good question. I, I, the governor's OPMA extension, um, likely won't get extended again, and I'm planning for that. And Brandy and I have done some testing in the council chambers. I think I would plan for two weeks from now. You're right where you're at. Um, and but Brandy and I are probably in the council chambers with a, uh, I've got, if I have one device in the chambers, I, we have to have, we have to provide a space for the public to come to the meeting. And I can put you guys all up on a big flat screen TV and the meeting is all coming out of the TV. So if somebody wanted to come and observe the meeting, we could comply with OPMA. And, uh, but I think it's challenging to social distance, you folks. I couldn't do it with all of you at the dais and we'd have to spread you around the room. And I think this is working pretty good. Uh, I, I really do. And, um, I know we're not paying the attorney to travel over here and that's a good thing. We like seeing her and I like it when the bills less, so. Councilmember Clausen?
Yeah, my only comment in something like that. I, I really appreciate the commute home after a council meeting, but I would like whatever facilities you put up, when a, the public speaks, I would like to be able to see them speak. So if you get a system that would do that, that I think would work fine.
I think I, how it's gonna work is I'm gonna sit in Mark Dorsey's chair and, uh, because I can only Bluetooth so far across the room to that TV. And, uh, I will spin my computer around when, when public comment happens, if someone came to the chambers. So yes, I've, we've been playing with that actual scenario where somebody's at the podium and, uh, you want to hear, well, I might be sitting in your chair, Mr. Clausen or Mr. Dorsey's chair, kind of that side of the room so that I can get a good signal to the, to the TV.
A lot of the equipment that you can purchase now for this kind of Skyping, telecommuting stuff, uh, has a built-in camera in the TV itself. So you can see whoever's talking to the TV. So that might be an option you should explore as well. But my point is, is that however you do it, I'd like to be able to see the person speaking.
I hear you loud and clear. And that cart TV camera setup that we're getting a quote on is exactly what you're referring to, that we want, even when we're having you folks, uh, in the room versus paying an expensive consultant to come into the room. Maybe we're putting them on the TV right in front of us. I, I, this is, one thing this has done, this pandemic has, has woken us up a little bit to technology and taking advantage of technology.
Yeah.
So, not that I don't like, I'd like to see your faces and see you in person, but, uh, you know, it's, we have a responsibility too, to keep ourselves safe.
Well, face to face, my hand wouldn't scare you any longer, so.
That's true. Thank you for that question, Mr. Rosa Pepe. And so I'm, I'm planning for, yeah, the answer, the, the short answer is planning for exactly what we're doing, but with a twist that we're probably opening the council chambers, uh, for the public to come in if they chose to. So, all right, with that, I believe our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.